Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Cablecast Post Agenda on Homelessness for Wednesday, March 26, 2025. For the record, we are joined by council members Strausberger and Coggo, and other members might be joining us shortly. So I called this post agenda as an opportunity for us. We had a discussion in the fall about the plan for homelessness through the winter. I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to discuss the plan for the rest of the year here. We kind of talked about that at that meeting, that this was the logical next step, but wanted to have an opportunity to invite you in and talk about what our plan is for the rest of the year as we get through the cold months here, probably also do a little bit of a recap on how the winter has gone, if that's okay. So if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
My name's Lee Schmidt. I'm the Public Safety Director for the City of Pittsburgh.
Camila Larcong, Assistant Director for the City of Pittsburgh, overseeing Office of Community Health and Safety.
Erin Dalton, Director of the Department of Human Services for the County.
Andy Hafill, Administrator of Homeless Services at Allegheny County DHS.
Awesome. And I believe that you had a presentation you wanted to go over, is that correct?
Yeah, that would be okay.
You turn your mic on.
Yeah, sorry. Yes, we have a couple of slides. So we thought we would cover winter shelter, a little bit about the encampments work, and just very briefly on 500 and 500.
Okay.
Does that sound good? And then certainly questions, obviously.
Yes.
We expect that. So Andy and I will share this. Andy, do you want to do the, do you want to talk about winter shelter?
Yep. Yeah, it's great. Yeah, I have a few slides here, just kind of recap a little bit about what the plans were for this winter, and then kind of talk through how it went. So you might remember that when we met in November, we talked a little bit about our strategy that we had planned for the winter. I'll kind of run through that, that plan. So we, as we have in previous winters, we, we had a number of overflow shelters operate this winter. A number of our providers that operate year-round shelters kind of flex up their capacity in the wintertime, so we have five such programs. And those existed at Second Avenue Commons, Light of Life, East End Cooperative Ministries, Salvation Army, and Unity Recovery. And so from mid-November until this month, they've sort of increased their capacity to take in additional folks. Additionally, we had a dedicated winter shelter this, this winter on the north side that operated at the North Side Partnership Project. It's 2610 Maple Avenue on the north side. That was, that has been open every night this winter. And to access that shelter, we provided daily transportation from downtown at Second Avenue Commons in the evening, in the evening, and then back in the morning. Also this winter, we were able to eliminate our Code Blue protocol that existed in previous winters. So you might remember last winter, we had a dedicated Code Blue shelter that operated at Ammon. And when the temperatures got particularly cold, we activated that, opened that shelter, and then worked with some of our regular shelters that might not typically have people remain inside during the day. We were able to eliminate that protocol this winter by working with all their shelters providers to allow folks to stay inside during the day, and then, and then have this dedicated winter shelter that's operating every night. Similarly, we were able to work with Pittsburgh Mercy and expand the hours of the Second Avenue Commons Engagement Center. So previously, that had operated just during the week, Monday to Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. But for this winter and going forward, that was able to expand to be seven days a week and operate from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So there really wasn't like a window of time when people couldn't come in from the cold. So just a reminder of how we landed on the winter shelter last fall, to happen at North Side Partnership Project. So we did put out a solicitation at DHS last, last spring to, to have a winter shelter. And we awarded that sort of a joint project through the North Side Partnership Project and then Community Family Advocates. And we anticipated that it would serve roughly 100 people each night and operate from December through the middle of March. We at DHS have been really very involved in helping to operate that and provide oversight at their shelter. As I mentioned, we have daily transportation to and from the shelter. We provide meals, dinner and breakfast, as well as snacks. We've had street medicine teams that have been there every evening during the week. That's been a really important collaboration to have those teams there every night to provide medical support. And we, we have security teams on site. We've had the opportunity there to have, like, take case management opportunities with street outreach, with housing providers and whatnot. So I think it's been a really successful collaboration and project there this winter. Been really critical for us to be able to have that location open every night this winter. We haven't had a time when we've hit capacity or had to turn people away, so that has been been great. We, I did want to show appreciation for PLI at the city for really working with us to help obtain the occupancy permit there and kind of, kind of work through that. So thanks for that. Want to mention too, that as part of this project, we were pretty engaged with the, the community groups there in the north side. So the Perry Hill Top Citizens Council, we attended some of their meetings and kind of talked through them, talked with them about our planning efforts. And we've had sort of ongoing, regular conversations with, with their leadership and with the Beulah Foundation, just to kind of talk through any issues that might come up with community members and kind of work through that. So those have been very positive and haven't really had any issues with the community arise. So I wanted to talk a little bit here about, like, who we served, how many people have been served throughout the winter. Again, mentioning the, the five overflow shelters that we have. Some of these have a small number of beds, they just, they added 20 beds for the winter. Second Avenue Commons has 40. The winter shelter on the north side has 140 spots. So we served a lot of people. These shelters have served a lot of people. If you look at the, the column on the right, this sort of indicates, if you think about every person staying there in the evening and then adding up those nights throughout the winter, again, from November through, through today, cumulatively, it's over 23,000 bed nights of individuals, not, not individuals served, but night overnight overnight, representing bed nights people served. So really successful, really pleased to have these, these shelters operating. So it's pretty cold out today, but it is, it is spring. And so we've been thinking about phasing out and working with our overflow shelters to begin to phase out our, our overflow programs. Those five overflows that I mentioned began phasing out in the middle of March. And what that means is that they're working with people who have been staying there regularly, but not admitting new, new guests, and they're beginning to slowly sort of reduce capacity over the weeks. And so Second Avenue Commons will remain open through the middle of April, whereas the other overflows will be wrapping up here in the next week or so. The winter shelter on the north side, at this time, we're not anticipating changing any operations at this time, and kind of being really thoughtful about how we plan for the closure of that program. Yeah, we'll be looking at the, you know, sort of the occupancy there, sort of accounting for these closures to the overflows and the weather changing, and sort of getting a sense of the demand there, and being very thoughtful about how that, that transitions. It's sort of a recap of how the winter went. Happy to answer questions now or after we're done.
Do members want to start here and then go to the rest of the presentation? Or would you prefer that they go through everything and?
It's up to you.
Yeah, I, I, I think it might be easier to do that.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Okay, so, okay, my first question.
Turn your microphone on. What's that? You want to turn your microphone on so good people can hear you?
Okay. My first question, I guess, is the overflows, we're going to be shutting down. Those are strictly for warm, to keep people warm, is that right? They're not to provide services or meals, it's just for warmth?
Yeah, they're, they're overnight sleeping combinations. They're, they operate just like a shelter where they provide dinner and breakfast and, and provide shelter to people. The, the great thing is that, that they are all really attached to providers that operate year-round shelters. So as Second Avenue Commons, for example, as they have sort of regular openings in those, in the shelter, then new folks can transition there, so.
Got it, got it. Andy, what's going on over there at Second Avenue Commons? Somebody was here today saying things are really, really bad. I have not toured the places of late. I've not heard much about it, to be honest with you, but is there, are there issues there? Is there fighting? Is there something going on there? I don't know.
Yeah, and I, I think.
Same issues as always, what?
I, I think, I, I think that they're, like, like most places, these are, these are shelters where there are different kinds of folks staying there, and there's always some challenges, but it's going really well. Yeah, I think we're continually working with the team there.
There's not been any brawls or?
No.
Police and having had to respond there, or, you know, nothing out of the ordinary other than, yeah, there's always, of course, you know, issues.
I was actually on the phone today, all of us were, with, with the police commander for downtown, as well as Sergeant Bristow and CEO of Mercy. We're working through a couple of issues that have come up, really small things though. And so if those are the small things we're working on without these larger issues, that I think that's great to see.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I would say because Second Avenue Commons expanded their daytime hours, there were a lot of folks in there. And so we either need to find maybe a better way of using that space during the day, or find an additional space. And so the only thing that I would say is major for us to kind of think about is how we use that space during the daytime hours. But no, again, talking to the police today and Mercy, I think it went very well.
Okay, so nothing in ordinary violence or anything going on there to speak of?
No.
Okay. The North Side Partner Project, that is funded by DHS? Okay, entirely?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, because, because that took on a lot this year, correct? I mean, that was responsible for as much as Second Avenue Common as far as?
Yeah, and, and really, you still have time, it's open, it's a wonderful place, honestly. If you get the chance, go up. We should have included nice pictures. I was up, I had the opportunity to serve a meal there on New Year's Eve, like, the staff there had balloons, they had vision books for people to kind of fill out.
And that's new, Erin, is it new place?
Yeah, new place.
Was it open prior, and we just jumped in, no?
Yeah, we got, we got a community organization who had a building that they were willing to let us use, and, and then we, we partnered that with the staff, and it's been, I think, a really wonderful spot for the people staying there. And as Andy already said, without a lot of community concern, we, we, that would be another picture we could have brought, is there's a, there's a newsletter. I could find a picture, actually, because I sent it out.
So you started from scratch there. You had the building, and you had the will of some people in the community to help out.
That's right.
Yeah. What's that operation run a year to? I mean, you only have one year in your belt.
That's, it's around 2 million, but that includes a lot of different spaces.
That's really not that bad, I mean, considering the amount of people you took care of there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll save my other questions for, you know, I see what we're going to get into later here, so I just wanted to ask about that facility. But I'm glad to see that facility you got operating, it's, obviously, was a big difference-maker for you this year.
Councilwoman Kelsmith, do you have any questions? We're, we're doing kind of the winter portion first, and then we'll, we'll move into the plan for the rest of the year.
Yeah, no, I'll wait until you're done with, I'm looking through the presentation now.
Okay, so I, I do have a couple of questions here. Unity Recovery, I was looking at the, your beds, your bed night chart there. I think Unity Recovery only held 36 people to gate with a capacity to hold 1,700 in terms of bed nights.
Yeah.
Is, are they not meeting their capacity, or, and, and this is their site in Homewood, not the site in South Side, correct?
Yeah, that's right. This is the location in Homewood, so they, they operate a 27-bed shelter that, then they have an additional 12 beds that are overflow from that. They, they tend to have a pretty steady group of people that use those, those same beds each night, so they just don't have a lot of turnover. So that's why you see a lower number there of 36. And then cumulatively, if you count those 30, the same 12 people every night over the course of the winter, you get to 1,700.
I see, so those are, those are unique guests that are in the left side column, okay.
Yep.
All right, I apologize for not understanding, that makes sense. So you would probably, well, I guess I shouldn't say that. But it isn't a bad thing to have someone, you know, see the same faces over and over again, that means that they've built a sense of comfort there, and this is somewhere they, they like coming to.
Yeah, and this is, these are, these are essentially single rooms upstairs, so, so this is a really coveted space that, you know, people really want to be in, that we use, this might be the overflow stats, but that we, that we use for people who we don't think could, could do well in a congregate setting.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, and I apologize if I missed this, is Second Avenue Commons 100% up and running now, or are we still waiting on portions of it to, to open back up?
Yeah, so the, the shelter portion of it is, is 100% up and running, that's been open since November, and that includes the, what we call the third floor. If you're on Second Avenue, it actually looks like it's the second floor. And so that's the year-round shelter, that, and then the, the main floor there that has the Engagement Center and the UPMC Clinic, the lower level is where the, the overflow operates. Yeah, that's been operational since November. There's, the top two floors aren't quite yet online, but I believe there's, there's programming that's starting later this month, so.
Yes, that's right. So just to say, I think there's, Abby's here, Abby Horn is here as well, she might be able to fill us in. She, the, the fourth floor would be kind of permanent supportive housing with additional supports run by Western Psych, and so we're starting to fill those spots right now, and I think they're still doing, we're still doing planning around the fifth floor.
Okay. Well, I'm, certainly have a couple more questions here, but can we move into the next portion of your presentation?
Yeah. I'll take this piece, I'll take help from everybody at the table, these are always joint efforts. So just to touch a little bit on the more focused kind of encampment work, I don't love the word encampment, but it's, I think, the familiar word that we use.
Oh, campground.
Camp, yes, campground. So, yeah, we've, we've worked together with the city, and again, I'm happy to have my colleagues jump in here on a couple of places where we've been able to close those camps through housing and engagement. And that's always, that's always our, that's always our, our efforts. And some folks take us up on that housing, and not everybody does, but particularly in the work on the jail trail, we were partnering with additional folks and kind of extending our trust through them, and many, many of those folks took housing with very few folks turning us down. And so I think we've gotten better at this over time, but we work together on the North Side Trail, and then the Eliza Furnace Trail, and we are working on the South Side Trail right now. And we'll just mention the, the graph here. So we've got analysts who, staff who ride the, the trails, and the places where we know that there are a lot of community concerns around, around camps, and we track every single week where the tents are and where the encampments are and how many tents there are. So this is not street outreach, you know, this is not trying to engage with the folks, we have lots of people doing that work. This is about how many tents are there, how many encampments are there. We were not going to be the people anymore who don't know where things are when the community very, very well knows. So we've been tracking this since 2023, and you can see in the, in the latest period, for this same path that we, that we track, those tents have gone down quite a bit. And most of what is left there is, is the South Side. So we're just, we're pleased to see that, and we're pleased to have partnered with so many folks to get people housed, and there's more work to do, for sure, so.
I just add that from the Roots North Side, from that collaboration, since January, we've been able to get 75 people moved into shelter that were outside or sleeping in areas that were unstable, and that has been a very high number compared to previous years. A lot of this is invite shelter only thanks to that collaboration with DHS and that North Side new facility. Talked to the Roots Team Lead, Zone One, and he's thinking that by the end of this month, we'll be trending to almost 100 folks. So that's, that's pretty, that's pretty amazing compared to other years, and it's that collaboration having, being part of the provider calls where we can talk to DHS folks and tell them the specific needs of our own folks, like if they need some more case management, mental health housing. So that has been very successful in really implementing county-city case conferencing and collaboration, so just wanted to add that. That number, we're pretty excited about.
I'm going to stop here, and before we go 500, or do you want to continue?
Do you remember questions?
I just want to say, you don't have the one in the West End listed there? For the camp closure?
Yeah. So there have been lots of smaller camp closures, I was focusing on the?
Well, it was kind of large.
A major, so, yeah.
And the Western Bridge.
The one where the Republicans came in and cleaned it up, remember? I told you, you were going to clean it up, DPW was going to clean it up, but the next day, it was a part of a Facebook thing that they cleaned it.
Yeah, I think that one was actually done before this cycle.
Before this cycle, okay.
Yeah, this is kind of the?
But it was pretty big, so I want to make sure that?
Yeah, this is like the November to?
But I do want to say DPW came in and posted some signage, OCHS came in, and you came in, and you placed the, the people that were there. So I do want to make sure that was very clear, it wasn't like it was, you ignored it, you posted your signs and gave some warnings and stuff. And placed people, that's the part that was most important, that people got placed into housing.
Yeah, no, thank you, it's a, it's a really good point, there are, there have been a lot of other efforts, right? So there's, I mean, we have different names for them, but like, you know, like the Grant Street Encampment, and I think something we call Triangle, that I don't know what other people call, and so on. So that, yes, absolutely, there have been a number of other efforts, yes. Public Safety Director's right, this is just the most recent significant work, but thank you for mentioning.
Thank you.
Other members? Councilman Coggo?
Mr. Chairman, so how many estimated, I see on this chart, is it like, we're talking less than 20 tents out there now? Or around 20?
In these, in these key areas, so, and Andy can probably help me here, I think he wrote it, he wrote it himself, at least, at least once. So this is, this is the, why don't I let you do it, the actual, and we can show you the, we can show you the exact route, so it's certainly not every tent in the city or the county.
Okay, well, let me ask you this, how many different sites? Let's start with how many sites so far are we talking about? We know South Side Trail, I know that, what others?
Yeah, maybe if I describe the route a little bit, it really, I think, starts on the north side around like 31st Street Bridge down to the casino, and then a bit of downtown, near Second Avenue Commons, Eliza Furnace Trail, and then basically the South Side Trail.
Okay, okay, that's not bad. Over there on 28 on the north side, you know, that area where you got off of Chestnut Street, I think it was?
Yep.
That's clear.
That's right.
Because that was nasty.
Yeah.
I'm so glad that, you know, and I will tell you, Erin, you know, I felt you were unfairly treated two years ago, because, yeah, just getting a grip on what was going on was not easy, and, you know, I was very involved, but?
I think he's referring to me, but go ahead.
No, 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 I mean, I, you know, just, you know, the whole issue, I mean, gosh, how many people put in tents, cities popping up everywhere, campgrounds popping up everywhere, you know? But, but it really seems like you had a really great year, you know, this, getting us through this winter, and the fact that we're talking about just a few sites, and less people, and Camilla, how you say you got 75 people through Roots off the streets?
Just in the north side.
And found housing for them, and not even dealing with DHS, it's only your own?
No, we, we, we actually rely on DHS.
Yeah, okay, right, so you work together, obviously. Okay, gotcha, gotcha. So 75, how many people you estimate you got off, off the street that were living on the street in the past year? I mean, it's got to be hundreds.
And maybe I can, I can pull it up, I mean, it's, it's, when we talk about actually housing people, it's like 1,700. I mean, it's, it's, we have lots of different programs, right? So it's, it's a, I'll double-check the number, but it's, it's over 1,000 for sure, so lots of people getting housed. But in a way that I think it feels different at this point, there is more hope in the population, that there, there is turnover in the shelter, people are finding housing.
So again, you know, they say cold weather, people, you know, people will take the housing. You don't anticipate people, all the people that you have housed or found at least temporary housing for, we're not anticipating them coming back because the weather's nicer to the campgrounds, they seem to be, this seems to be working, it seems to be happy to transition, and they seem to be on the right path, is that right?
I think that's?
They didn't just take housing to get out of the cold, right?
Yeah, the, maybe, maybe a number of us want to say something here. I mean, obviously, there are always people who, who struggle, but we offer services alongside the housing, and, you know, we're committed to working with the city to keep the places that have been, have been cleared, cleared. And so, you know, and continuing, if, if somebody comes down and, over on the north side, which happens regularly, Roots primarily goes out and talks with them, and we find a different, a different spot for them, find housing or return to housing and so on.
Yeah, those 75, when we dig deeper, are folks that had been in housing programs, that we've been able to really study their preferences, and to recommend to DHS what is the best program for them to be in. There will, I think one of the strategies that has worked really well with Roots and OCHS is we find the folks that tend to go back to these areas are folks that are not being successful in a lot of these programs, and a lot of it has to do with they're not from Pittsburgh, they have been chronically homeless for 10-plus years, and they've been traveling around. So what we've really focused on specifically in downtown, and like people, the, the longer you're homeless, the more you become chronically susceptible to mental health, to drug use, and so we have all these teams that touch them now, and so we've been working on a program between three, four teams of reunification. So right now, we're working on three cases that have created the highest strain on emergency services in the downtown area of reuniting them with their family members, we're working with folks in West Virginia, Ohio, as far away as the west coast. So I think that that gets folks that become chronically homeless and then pop up in these places. We're trying to figure out root causes versus just thinking about homelessness, but the root causes, and with expanding the Roots team, what allows us to do is now we have a greater amount of, like, folks out there, because these are not only tents, these are people that might be couch surfing, people who are in abandoned buildings, people who might be living in their car. So I think these are the folks that are not visible to, like, the businesses or, or some of the constituents, but do need our help. And so I think that having these programs that are specifically targeted for drug use disorder, mental and behavioral health is, is, is helping with that issue. And I know in downtown, that has been like a very big strain on Pitts, on police, that we've been able to really, those are the folks that you're seeing, like, on and on and on.
Okay, so I just really want to say congratulations on both your parts. Big difference from the prior year, right? So whether it just took a while to get our feet above, below us, but it really seems to be a successful year for you all, both of you. One final thing, I cleaned up a site myself recently. When we clean these sites up, do we do a deep dig? Like, you know, I mean, I mean syringes, I'm talking thousands and thousands and thousands. It's, it's making me rethink Prevention Point, okay? Who supplies these needles to, obviously, we do it for, to keep people alive, but I feel like we are spreading disease throughout this city. I mean, it's amazing, I just couldn't believe the amount of needles, honestly, thousands, and five, 50-gallon bucket full of needles. I'm talking about five or six people on one corner, I'm not talking about an encampment. So what kind of cleaning do we do? Do we just go in there and rake it, and are there still needles strewn about these camps? Or do we do a deep dig kind of rake and go, you have to go deep, I'm telling you, they bury them, it's the craziest thing, but?
So yeah, that has been a high need, so we've been trying to think creatively of how we can help with that. I know you met Heidi at?
I did.
She's the post-program manager, we're working with our 3-1-1 service. We do deep, we do clean needles after encampments are closed, because that's something that obviously our partners in DPW are not responsible for, we've received training.
Well, DPW also was a big part of it, and, you know, our director here sent, you know, who did you send out there? You, you helped me get DPW out there, I guess, but, but, but yeah, I mean, they, they were sensational.
Yeah.
We all, we all had a part in cleaning this?
Exactly.
This disaster, it was a disaster.
Just better for the safety to have folks that receive the training about how to cleanly dispose. We have a really good collaboration with AHN, so we provide all those discarded syringes so that they can dispose them in a safe way. But we are currently asking 3-1-1, and I got confirmation that that is going to be possible, so that folks in the community can tell us where there are places. We're also having conversations with different council members and communities about these about these big Sharps containers that we have, about placing them. We're going to be placing, we're working currently with 2AC with Mercy to put one in front of there. So like those hotspots that you find and those have really yielded incredible results in other cities. We've studied them of diminishing littering like 80%. So we wanted to try that in our city as well. But we will have streamlined communication so we can help communities clean up syringes.
Somebody needs to clean it up, whether it's Prevention Point, who gives the needles away? Who else gives these needles away?
Well, I'll say like the, the biggest struggle I, I would say is not Prevention Point, but there are organizations who don't have a program from the Health Department that provides syringes with not, with no disposal policies. So there's a lot of folks providing syringes that we don't know who they are. And, you know, the, the, really what you, the public health policy is to provide syringes accompanied with services. That's what gets people into those recovery services, into the services they need. It shouldn't just be provision of syringes with no support to the folks. So Prevention Point does a great job of connecting folks to services. We do too.
I would love to know a list of who supplies the syringes.
We've been trying to get it.
I would like to know who supplies them and those people, I feel, need to clean these sites up. They really do. This should not be put on Public Works or Public Safety. This is a hazard. It's dangerous. It's disease-filled. I was in the middle of it. It was disgusting. And, and it's just so unsanitary and it's so crazy. I can't even believe it. So somebody needs to clean these up, honestly, and go to the sites wherever they are. I, I know where they are in my district. Right there, I'll show you, you know, clean them up. Have somebody clean them up because I would need, when you say those safety boxes, I need 50 gallon bucket safety boxes here, okay? Not, you know, I started putting them aside at first and I just couldn't believe it. It was just, it's like raking leaves. Anyway, all right, that's it. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to go on. I just, you know, had to address that with you.
I let the record show that we've been joined by Councilwoman Warwick and Councilwoman Gross. So I don't know if you've been able to follow along in your offices. We're moving from, we talked a little bit about the winter, how the winter went. We're now talking about encampments and tents and then we're going to move on to the 500 and 500. Want to give members an opportunity to ask questions during those segments. So if either of you would, would like to go.
Yeah, sure. Just as far as the encampments go, I was actually, the reason I'm late is I was on a call with CEO Works and OCHS and Friends of the Riverfront, Allegheny Cleanways and DPW and Public Safety to talk about, because, you know, we have these various groups that are doing cleanup work, whether it's along the river trails or dumb sites, et cetera. And CEO has been focused on the trail work, right? With, together with Bridge Outreach. So I just, I do just, you know, I am, you know, kind of watching this process specifically on Eliza Furnace Trail, a little on South Side, but I, you know, is, it, it makes me very proud to be in Pittsburgh. I don't know if other cities have accomplished this, but just the care with which, you know, the county and the city and all of our, our support folks, you know, coming together and really, you know, it's easy to just say, get the hell out of here. You can't stay here. That is easy. We could have done that. We absolutely could have done that like, you know, three years ago. Just been like, go to, get out of here or go to jail. And, you know, we, as a city, we made a choice not to do that. And now over, you know, the past year with County Exec in Amarota, we've been working together and, and this case by case support that we're giving people is, I, I think it's really extraordinary. I really do. And so I want to congratulate you. And I know we're not there yet, right? I know like South Side, we're working our way through, but it's gotten a lot better. Again, I don't go through South Side that often, but I did go through last week and I, I was sort of pleasantly surprised by, you know, there were just fewer tents, right? Than there had been before. It's, we're not there yet. But, and I know, I feel like I've told this story before, but, you know, it was in the Eliza Furnace, you know, when that encampment was being cleaned up. Just to kind of give folks like the, a visual of the, of the level of, of care and intention that this was done is the whole encampment was cleaned, the whole place. Every tent was gone and there was this one little tent and a woman was in there who had been there easily nine months, maybe a year long, you know, I recognized her and she was in her tent like getting her, her last few things, right? Like everything else was gone and so clear, I mean, it was just so clear that they had waited until she was able to get back into her tent and get her last few items, right? They left just her one little tent there in the middle and then the next day it was gone, right? So she'd gone back in and it was clearly coordinated timed so that she'd gone back, gotten her last things and then the tent was gone. So I just, it's remarkable, you know? And yeah, I'm just very grateful to all the work that you all are doing and grateful to our leadership for, for, for taking this avenue. And, and I guess Director Schmitt, so, so just my understanding is going forward, right? That, and maybe apologies if you've explained this already, but my understanding going forward, particularly on the riverfront trails, right? Is that now it is posted that there's no camping and there's a window of time, like I don't know, 48 hours or something? So that if a tent does, so that we don't get back, right? We don't want summer to come and then like boom, now we've got a, you know, an encampment again, you know, once the weather gets warm. So if a tent pops up, then what? Law enforcement can come and say, hey, you can't stay here, connect the person with Roots. I don't know if you want to explain that a little bit.
Yeah, sure. Everything we're doing is person-centered, right? So we want to make sure we're providing support first. Because otherwise we'll end up with the same thing we had before, which was pretty much, as you said earlier, like if we just want to tell people you can't be here, they're just going to find another place to go. So we don't want that to happen because that just means we're essentially moving folks everywhere, all around. So we want to try to get, engage with them as quickly as possible. So yeah, now that we have, so the North Shore Trail is now posted, no camping in those areas. The Eliza Furnace Trail is posted. We're working on some plans for the South Side for posting with some deadlines as well as just no camping, period. So as tents pop up in those areas, whether it's police, Roots, or just through the 3-1-1 or notification system, as soon as we're aware, the police can engage if they see it and let them know. They make the referral to Roots. Roots goes out and works with the person to say, you know, this isn't a place you, we can have you be. How can we help you get, what do you, what type of housing are you looking for? What type of shelter are you willing to take until we get you into housing? And, and working with those folks. As you stated, between the North Shore and Eliza Furnace Trail and now we're, we're starting the same in the South Side. It is very much a coordinated effort, trying to be very custom because not everybody is willing to accept the same things. And to the point earlier, you know, we are watching, now that the weather's getting warmer, are there new folks coming? Are there folks more? New spaces popping up. So we want to engage with them as quickly as possible and, and help them find a location to be hopefully within a shelter space or within permanent housing or temporary housing at least, until they can get into permanent. So we are working very closely with everybody to, to come through with that process. On a daily basis, you know, I get emails. Assistant Director Alarcon gets emails, police get emails and we're all kind of, instead of each of us trying to do it on our own, we kind of, as soon as one of it gets an email, everybody kind of gets looped in to say, what are we doing? Have you seen this person? Have you seen this person? Sometimes it's Roots teams, sometimes it's DHS's teams. Sometimes it's police, sometimes it's co-response, sometimes it's other community organizations. So it's a matter of making sure everybody's on the same page. If any, find out who might have a relationship and start from there to get folks where they need to be and what's safe for them as well as everybody else.
Just add that we've been piloting this in the downtown area just to see what the response from the folks there are. And we've never gotten to the point where, I think there was only one case that we had to work a little harder, but people are more open when you have other teams also be the ones who are engaging with them. And we added another team, the diversion team. If people are refusing to leave after like engaging with Roots, co-response and police have the ability to like cite them or we have a diversion team that a case manager can meet in the scene and do that warm handoff so that people, the more we arrest folks, the, the harder it is for us to place them in programs. And the more decompensated they get in jail, obviously they don't have the right supports. But we, I just got a text of a really hard case in the Strip District for the past week where a Roots team had engaged, police had engaged and co-response just tried one last time with them and really got them, the circumstances. What I try to tell people when I'm in their communities is understanding the humanity and what's the person is experiencing. So it, it's a couple who has recently been working with CYF and they're trying to get themselves into recovery to get back their family, reunite their family. And so they didn't have a place to recover because where they were staying was they were being vulnerable to substance use. So that's why they were in those tents. Sometimes it's important for our folks to understand the stories of the people in tents. But we were able today to get them today when co-response, a social worker, talked to them. They were open. We got the Roots team member in the field and they're working to get them housing with DHS where they can be supportive in their recovery journey and get back reunited with their family. It is Social Work Month, so I just want to highlight that social work, workers are super important and we're very lucky to have them in our office and in the city. But I think that having these person-centered approaches is important. So I'm constantly communicating with the commanders of the zones we're in and DHS. So I, I think we're doing it with a lot of humanity and compassion and it's going to solve the, why the person is in the tent versus just getting them out of our site.
I think that's all. Is there any, I mean, I know that there's not a fixed time, but for South Side, because I know folks, like that South Side River Trail is, you know, heavily used in the summer. People like to bike and walk their dogs and, and whatnot. So do we know, like how, how many folks do we have left to get into housing on the South Side Trail?
Yeah, we do, actually, we had a meeting yesterday for about an hour and a half, two hours, working through with the teams to, to develop some of those. We don't have the final timeline yet, but within the next month or so, we'll probably have some dates and some signs going up. Same thing though, we are trying to be very custom and aware of each person's needs and desires to help get them into placement, in placed into housing or shelter that they're willing to accept, that we can get them into, that they'll be successful in. We don't want folks just constantly bouncing out of the systems either. So.
And the number that we have, you know, it can, it's changeable, but it's about 33. So it's not, it's, it's not, you know, a ton of folks and it's not the biggest we've done. So yeah, just give you a sense of that. Okay, great. I think that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I think I've caught up and, and, and heard most, answers to most of my questions. I just want to maybe recap what I didn't hear and I was trying to kind of do two things. My office was listening a little in one ear and doing something else with another, but this slide with the number of tents in key areas that goes back to May of 2023 shows that there's currently, you know, fewer tents that are counted than in May of 2023. So I don't know if it's been said already, but that is just phenomenal, phenomenal progress. So congratulations. I know it's really been, you know, we've had difficult conversations here over the last couple of years and we've all tried to explore what are the causes and what are the consequences? And how do we achieve these things? Councilwoman McCollough and I still have pending legislation about helping to convert more, remove zoning barriers, let's put it that way, that may be helpful for the next part of the presentation. But it's really, it's really good to hear that you've had, not just as Councilwoman Warwick, Warwick was emphasizing, taken such care and being people, people-centered and doing things that I think I heard that I want to emphasize, like helping people safely store their belongings. Right? Not just throwing them away and then leaving people to fend for themselves to get a place in a shelter or get back to the shelter, right? I see transportation here is provided. I know in some of our other discussions, you've talked about there was locked storage for safekeeping. Because I get those questions from my constituents, right? We hear the stories from other cities especially, you know, that people have lost their birth certificates or their social security cards or their kids' photos or whatever is their really important, their prescriptions or the, the medication they need on a daily basis. And then, and then what do you do, right? You don't have your prescription and you don't have your medicine and you don't have, you know, even ID. So that we are helping people as much as we can, as many people as we can get their lives back. Which involves some of those nuts and bolts and fundamentals. So thank you for that. Because I, I get those, I do still get those questions. So people who are just assuming that, you know, we are just arresting people and throwing things away. And so it's really good to hear that we are preserving people's rights, right? So that these are, these are our neighbors and we're going to treat them with, with respect. So I really appreciate that. And that it's, and so to have done, to, to build the infrastructure, to do that, created the collaboration, to effectuate that and then to have actually accomplished it is a lot of, it's a lot of positive achievements. So I appreciate that. I think I'll save my questions now to the next section, which is that up till now in the presentation, we've talked about shelter. But you haven't only just sheltered people, you've actually housed people. So I think that's the next section. So we'll get to that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilperson, trespasser, okay. I, I do have a couple more questions here. So I know we've talked about the South Side Trail that's, that's come up here. We also have other encampments in the South Side. PJ McCordell is most infamous. Is there any motion, any motion there or is that something else we're going to tackle? Or is it, are we just staying trail-related?
I can start. We, our outreach teams, and that includes all of our outreach teams, meet regularly, weekly and go over a by-name list of people we believe to be staying outside, no matter where they're staying. And our efforts are also focused on getting those people housed. And there's, there's tension there between how do you, you know, acuity of people on that list versus acuity of people who happen to be staying on the South Side or the North Side at that moment. And that's part, part of the challenge we face. But we're also, I want to, I want everybody to come inside, right? And so I think our focus has been on the spaces that have been both, I think, places where people are most victimized and where community has the most concern. But we're also working that kind of by, by name list of, of people who are outside.
Okay. You know, I, I want to echo comments that have maybe before about the, the trash situation. We're running into a, a real problem here in South Side with trash that is not on city property, but it's on the railroads property. Public Works doesn't want to clean it up. And, you know, especially with the T running now through Allentown, it is incredibly visible what, you know, what is just sitting out there. And it's, it's not, these aren't someone's belongings, at least now. It is, it is just garbage. And, you know, I, I want to reiterate just how important it is to find a way. You know, I understand there's liability, but like, I don't care if it's on the railroads property or privately owned or publicly owned. We've got to clean this up. And this, this mess that's here, like especially on the, you know, for, for people's view of South Pittsburgh coming across the T, that's what they're seeing. You know, so want to reiterate just how important that is to, to do something with that. It, it, it's a constant, a constant request in our office here. I also want to talk about, I, I-
I was going to say-
Oh, sorry.
Add a little bit to that. Councilperson Warwick mentioned she was in a meeting prior to this. Add a little bit to that. Um, uh, Councilperson Warwick mentioned she was in a meeting prior to this. That was part of what the meeting was about, that um, the CEO contract that we had put through to council um, is for public safety to essentially deploy the CEO team to do some cleanups. We're also working with Alleghen and Cleanway specifically on that entire uh, riverbank along the South Shore. Where they're gonna start cleaning up actually in the next couple of weeks, um, bringing their barge, working with CEO, working with DPW, kinda we, the meeting today was part about bringing all the folks, um, friends of the riverfront. Um, everybody together that works along the trails, works along the encampments, works along the neighborhoods to all just kind of say, let's just get it cleaned up, um, rather than which I had it with uh, Councilman Cogkill's area too, like oh, that's not ours, that's the Pendos, that's railroad, that's, I said, can we just please get it cleaned up? It's all a safety issue to me, so in a, health and wellness. So let's just clean it up and if we need to sort through who pays for it later, then we can, we can do that, but um, we're all about getting those teams together to make sure we are just cleaning those spaces up as they come in, so. We have funding for that. We have the contract in place now and then um, we will be, we're working with some foundations specifically around the uh, riverbank cleanups to help support and fund those those cleanups. I mean, some of it is from encampments, some of it's because they're uh, overflows from the sewers.
Sure.
So like any, all the trash that gets along the road, people don't realize at some point that floats down into the rivers, right? So how do we get those, working with Alka-San, working with uh, PWSA, or sorry, Pittsburgh Water? Um, to to just get that, those spaces cleaned up and then sort through the who's responsible for what later, just get it done, because the community doesn't care who's responsible. They want it cleaned up, right? And so do I and I think all of us at the table would. So that's, it's kind of the direction we're going with that. I hope for it to be successful. I may uh, lean on council members to to help with that, so.
And I'll just say, um, while human services isn't typically the cle- cleanup folks, we are, you know, we're supporting Bridge Outreach to do cleanup, particularly for the people who are staying there. They can clean up their own spaces and they want to and, you know, pay, supporting their efforts to do that. But I, I just want to say, I'm I'm sure, guaranteed there would be other county partners who also want to come to the table to to make sure that work gets done.
Yeah, I I you know, you'll, you'll hear me say this regularly, but like, our, especially South River, it it, it is dirty, it is filthy. And we, you know, we've, we've got to do better. It it is, it is a real crisis um, that we have there. Uh, in in relation to the, to the um, trash issue, we're finding a ton of propane tanks in um, in our encampments and like not one or three, but like twenty-five. What's going on there? I I know that people are passing them out, but are they coming from DHS or?
I, sorry, there's a very basic answer to the question, right? It's, you know, how people, folks are staying warm, how they're, we're not providing the propane tanks, no, not for sure, we're not. And I know there's been, there's lots of concerns amongst our teams about the safety of that, so, um, but people probably, you know, have limited options there. And so yes, we, we certainly have seen the same.
Yeah, and something, we've seen not just in encampments, but in different places, similar to don't see too much anymore, but TVs, right? Like propane tanks expire, you have to pay to get rid of them. So people are just tossing them in places. Sometimes it is near encampment, sometimes it's not, but or they'll give them to the folks and say, here's an old propane tank. I can't fill it, but there's probably some in it. You know, um, but there's nothing, like Roots, City, we're not giving propane tanks to anyone for heat or more purposes.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm not afraid to get involved in a community cleanup and it's common to pull some propane tanks out there. There are, there are so many propane tanks. I've never seen this many um, as I have this year, so, you know, and it, they're kind of congregating, um, and I'm sure there's a disposal fee of some sort that complicates that, but it it like, it's a, it's a real issue. Um, okay, uh, one other thing that I I want to mention and doesn't quite fit into any of uh, categories, but I wanted to get into it now. So I know that we're looking at doing the point in time count again. Uh, can you explain what's going on there, why that's happening? Is this uh, best practice?
Um, no, it would not be best practice to do it again. Um, yeah, so um, let me, let me just explain a little bit about the point in time for folks who might not know and and what happened this year and what we're, what we're doing. Um, so point in time count is required for us to um, conduct uh, by HUD, the the federal agency that funds the continuum of care. Um, and it's, you know, something that's done in all the continuums of care and it it helps us to get a national understanding of what uh, what's going on, right? Um, and it it does also provide an additional piece of local data um, that people also rely on. We don't rely on it so much for planning. Um, you know, doesn't, it, it, there are other things that are more helpful for planning, but it does, it is a piece of information that is relied upon locally as well. Um, and I guess what I would say about about the point in time counts kind of in a post-COVID era. Um, in my opinion, we've kind of moved away, kind of slowly, um, without really noticing from the core methodology of the point in time count. Um, and um, we've had some consultants in town who remind me, these are, I've actually never in my life felt like we've had consultants who are more capable of helping us to get to kind of the next phase here than these particular folks. These are folks um, who started the point in time count in New York, um, and then have helped people launch point in time counts all over the world, you know, from Paris to Columbia to Mexico City to Athens. And so they're helping us look at the methodology we've used over since COVID. Um, the methodology we used in January, we actually did conduct a second count last, last week. Um, so they'll help us analyze those two pieces of information, um, and then um, set a methodology for the future. In short, I didn't think, I mean, you, you all know me somewhat well. I'm I'm kind of a data person. And it just didn't make sense to me, the results we were getting um, with every other piece of data that we have. Um, and it felt irresponsible for me to just put that out, um, without A, getting another piece of information. Um, and getting some assistance and making sure we're doing this in the the best way possible. We will one hundred percent put all of it out. So it's not like we're not gonna put out the count from January, it's coming out. It's not like we're not gonna put out the count from March, it's coming out. And we will be able to talk about and have consultants um, supporting us to uh, make sure that the methodology we're using going forward um, is in line with best practice.
Can you talk a little bit about what the difference in methodology is?
Yeah, and I mean, Andy um, has done this work over the past number of years, maybe ten years, I don't know, some long number of years. So Andy can help here as well. Um, let me, let me talk to you just in brief terms about like the way it's done in say, a place like New York City, which you know, there's a lot of flexibility here. HUD does not require a specific approach, but it does provide some kind of confines around that. Um, so like in a place like New York City, and just know, I'm obviously not expert on this, um, they get two thousand volunteers and they go out at ten PM until four AM or six AM and they, they count everybody who is unsheltered. And then they look at the shelters as well, because you've got to count the shelter count. Um, that's the way they do their point in time count. They up, um, something I hadn't uh, known about, but they also even have decoys out. So the, a student, um, a professor has had students go out for for years and if they're not counted, you know, if if they only get half of the students, half of the decoys, um, then they, they up the estimate based on the, the, the number they didn't get. So that's, that's sort of the way New York City does that, right? Um, we've, we've taken more of a, um, and and so again, primarily with with volunteers. We've taken more of a kind of a known locations approach and tried to do it and attempted to do a census there. So let's take all the places where we think people are staying outside and let's go and and make sure we're getting them. We've also in recent years used our administrative data. So people that, I I mentioned that our teams work together every Monday, they review a by-name list. People that those folks know to be outside that, that um, that day, they were, we counted them in the count. Um, and we also do a, we, we've typically done our count over many more days than the kind of one night. Um, and also kind of reviewed, and this part is completely fine, you know, gone to service locations where people um, you know, Camila was talking about people who might be in abandoned buildings or in cars who were not going to be able to count in that kind of New York City style point in time count or in a known locations kind of point in time count and ask where they stayed the night before. So you might be able to pick some of those folks up at a Jubilee Kitchen or Roots. Um, you know, building or Second Avenue Commons. Um, so I think it's just again, some of the kind of COVID changes that didn't require us to actually survey people using the administrative data. Um, that a, a bunch of kind of methodology things in addition to it just not looking right, um, made me want to take a deeper dive, particularly into the methodology. So, yeah. Um, not the, not, not the um, problem, I think, that we wanted to solve this year. Um, but again, it felt to me irresponsible to just put something out um, that didn't align with the rest of the data that we were seeing as well as had some questions for for me around the methodology. So we did another count that I'm sure the consultants will say is not close enough to the point in time count methodology either. We, we, we pulled back some, some ways we were approaching it, use more volunteers, um, and we'll get a methodology going forward. Um, and we'll, we'll make it all available.
Good. Uh, yeah, I I find it really interesting. I mean, I know the point in time count is often heavily criticized by a lot of people. It, you know, it's a, an undercount, um, al- almost certainly. Um, but I've always thought that it's kind of like that, that economics phrase where like, uh, all no models are accurate, but some are useful. And I've always kind of seen it as that, as like, it's helpful in terms of a trend, it's not necessarily helpful in terms of like a raw number, you know, but um, so, you know, I do appreciate hearing kind of what the thought process is there and um, we'll be interested to see what it looks like.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually, I mean, again, not the thing we wanted to do. We have lots to do, but um, um, I'm really excited actually about working with, I said, these consultants are like the best at this. They know how to help us. They know how to customize for our region. You know, we've got a, we've got to look at the county, so maybe we're gonna sample outside of the county and not try and do a full count. Maybe we don't think we can get, you know, five thousand volunteers to do that. But they're the, they're the folks who can help us get to a, I think, really strong methodology. We're doing this not, it's an, also an opportunity to broad, it's always been done out beyond DHS. We always use outreach, we always use partners. Um, but the ownership of this can be broader than DHS, right? So it's an opportunity to say, because there are concerns, of course, about our transparency in this process. Um, let's, let's, um, let's have, you know, Michael Jonas from the Pittsburgh Foundation who's on the Housing Advisory Board, he could, he could join us and, um, you know, even maybe be a co-chair of the point in time count for next year. I'm not, I'm not committing um, uh, Michael to this, this process, but to just make, broaden it too and have like really clear operational lines for what we're doing, why we're doing it. Um, and I agree with you. I think it, it is important and until there's a different way, this is the way the country counts homelessness. And so it is really critical and important and I want to make sure we're doing it the best way we can.
Is funding tied to what are
I mean, there is, there is some funding consideration for sure. Um, I don't, but I also don't think like, I think HUD is smart enough to use lots of other data, right? And and like, we put out weekly counts of sheltered and unsheltered, right? So we're already sort of being transparent in that. Um, so I think they know we have fewer homeless, uh, people experiencing homelessness than LA. Um, but um, yes, it is also like needs-based as well.
Yeah, I'll just say that the funding is not necessarily tied to the number, but it's more that the community has to do that in order, in part of our requirement, so, yeah.
Okay.
Fair to say HUD takes need into account in determining continuum of care dollars.
Yeah, there, there are a lot of different data points that we submit to HUD every year as part of that funding application, so it's just one small part of it.
Okay. Um, all right, well, that's uh, enough for me. If you want to move to the, the next portion? Oh. Yeah. Turn your microphone on again.
You're always having to remind me of that anymore.
Yeah.
Slipping, getting old.
Hide your light under a bush.
Getting old. So, um, Director Aleck, I think this question's for you. Okay, so take the Liberty Tubes and and again, thank you, Director, for cleaning this place up with me. This was really Pendot responsibility, but it was, we had to get this place cleaned up. My question is this to you. Now, there are nobody in camp there, there is nobody staying there. But we have a regular five to six to eight people that visit the site every morning, evening, afternoon to panhandle, basically, right? Um, I don't have a problem with that. We, you know, we, we see that everywhere, pretty much in every corner. What I had a problem with and the reason we had to clean the site up was because they had two blankets hung from trees that they would go and that's where they would do their, their drugs. So I believe obviously the panhandlers are doing the drugs, right? They, I mean, that's where all the needles that I was talking about before come from. So Heidi showed up on the job, which I was so happy to see her and she, you know, came to help, to help. And I said, um, here's what I need from you, Heidi. I said, and I hope you can give me clarification, because I don't know if she could, you know, give me the okay on that or not, is these people that come to that corner, I don't care what they do, you know, as far as asking for money, that's, it's everywhere. Um, but I don't want them doing drugs. I don't want a needle there. I cleaned that up. I am hell-bent. I'm not gonna put up with that. So nobody's gonna be doing drugs there anymore. I need them checked on regularly as to making sure they're not doing drugs. And if they are, can we get them help? I mean, right? That's kind of where you come in, right? I don't know if you can get them off that corner. They, I believe they panhandle in order to get the money to do the drugs, obviously, right? So um, but can we stop them from doing the drugs there? Can we somehow get to these, I talked to them, I'm on a first-name basis with them, by the way, you know, so, so I know and, you know, um, but but I'm hoping to get them help where they don't find it necessary to go around the corner and do drugs and start a whole new collection of syringes there.
Yeah, Heidi talked to me right after she met with you and we tried, we talked about a plan. So because you are in the District of Post, uh, that team, which is the Post Overdose Support Team, they have a peer recovery special and a case manager. That is now a designated area for them to check. And what happens is engagement, right? That's the first, you know, getting to that place. Uh, people have to make that choice. And so what we do is just engage them, provide and, provide them basic needs. We provide them hygiene products, we provide them Sharps containers, and that starts building that relationship. I think there were some folks that were living a little bit like, not in that area, but close to that area.
True.
We got them connected, we got them connected immediately with DHS and they're already working with a case manager. And so that is an area that was not really in our, um, in kind of our route, because we work mainly with EMS. Uh, but now it's in our route and we'll continue to go and do outreach and really engage with the folks so that we can get them to a path um, of services. Yeah, that is definitely what we can do.
So you'll be checking the site?
We'll be checking the site, yes. We'll be checking the site and that's the, the success of our work has also been because of all of you, because you guys are the, you know, you're the eyes and ears out of a lot of places where we don't necessarily have a specific team. And your collaboration and open communication has helped up, helped serve your neighbors and your residents. So that's part of uh, the work that we want to continue to, to build upon.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, so it's comforting. I, I, I want you there. I want you trying to help these people, help, help them get off the corner. I prefer them not to be there, honestly. Because I still feel the drug activity is gonna go on. I do. Call me a pessimist, but you know, it's kind of the way it is. Um, I will leave with this. Um, again, I want to congratulate you, both of you, really, you two, Andy, as to the progress you've made. Councilwoman Gross and I set out a few years ago to come up with many different concepts that we've pitched to all of you. Uh, always in hope, I think, the, that we wouldn't need them. And perhaps now we can see the light that maybe we don't. And, but we'll keep our on the back burner just in case, uh, you know, because, um, but, but, but yeah, this is the first time I've felt this way for uh, four or five years, however long this has really come to, to come to light and, you know, the tension has been focused on it, so. So I do almost see a light at the end of the tunnel, um, but we'll keep our uh, legislation warm just in case, all right, and uh, go from there. So thanks again. Thanks for all you do. And thank you, Director, for taking care of that spot for me. And um, I count on you, Director, let's keep that place clean now. You know, we went through a lot of work to clean it up. You gotta keep it that way now. And and the people, I can't tell you. I mean, they're so appreciative. They knew what was going on there, you know, they're so, so appreciative and it's like, yeah, so, okay.
Uh, we'll work with them and once we get to a point where we feel that there's, we collaborate with police. We don't want police to be the first choice. So I appreciate We don't want police to be the first choice. So I appreciate you giving us the chance to, to work with them. And then we also are pragmatic. So once there's a point where we can't engage anymore and people don't want to work with us, then we collaborate with police.
They were actually always all pretty nice, you know? And they understood that I wanted to clean it up, and they understood, get out of the way. We're cleaning it up. So none of them really gave us a problem. And, you know, by the time Heidi got there, we were all on a first name basis. And, you know, I don't want to go as far as friends, but, you know, we're acquaintances, all right? Council, Mr. Chairman, thank you for holding this. I appreciate that. Can I shut my microphone off now? Should I shut it off now?
You know, when I first started in council, I had a lot of trouble turning my microphone on and turning it off. And, and you helped me through that, and, and here we are. The student has become the teacher. Too hard. You hit too hard.
See you guys.
If, if everyone's ago, this, I think we can move on to the next portion, the 500 and 500 portion.
Yes. Happy to talk about, I think, housing more generally. I, I labeled it 500 and 500, and we'll definitely talk about that. But there's also a number of other housing efforts. So this is, this is what people need, like, we, we do, we do need units, right? And it does not, it feels like, it does feel like on the issue of homelessness where, I don't like to use sports analogies, but it did really feel like we were very much on defense for the past couple of years. And it does start to feel like, okay, maybe we are on offense. Maybe we have enough strategy. We understand the problem enough. And I feel like having 500 and 500 and, and these units coming online are a big part of why it feels different. So just for the, for folks who, I know folks are aware of 500 and 500, but this is for a population. This is not for the chronically homeless, really hard to serve, having really significant needs. 500 and 500 fits a different piece of the puzzle. This is for folks who are in shelter. They're, they're stable. These are, you know, we were looking at data the other day. I mean, 10% of these folks have a criminal conviction. Only 20 or so percent of them have prior eviction filing. Like, things that even like do surprise me that, you know, we've seen a tenfold increase in seniors in our, in our shelter system. Just affordability issues are just real. And that's just, it's a sort of a different problem in a way than, than the problem of folks staying outside and with really significant needs. And so with the county executive's leadership, we've, we set a really good goal. It's not, was not an easy one to, to make, especially within the timeframe. For folks who do affordable housing work way more than I do, affordable housing creation takes a really long time, right? So we had to think differently with partners about how this would work, and, and it's working, right? So we've, I've got, I've got 203 units on this slide with 369 folks housed. We just went through like the minutia of the details and the folks matched. It's a little bit more than that. But we're, we're confident that we're going to make the 500 goal by the third week in October, when we're, when we're at 500 days. And this has been a lot of units that were previously, that, that are already affordable units that are prioritized for this population, both from the, the County Housing Authority and their subsidiaries, but also private developers that, that put units into the process. This is Bridge Housing, the Stanton Heights project. And then this is new units that have been, been created. Again, a lot of work with the County Housing Authority on this. I will say though, a really significant piece of the success was and is the City Housing Authority working with incredible speed on this project to get folks vouchers. I think the, the average is 12 days. That is not, that is not typical in these processes, and so we're incredibly grateful. They've also allowed us, when the, particularly when the County Housing Authority, which I, again, doesn't have vouchers to give, to port vouchers from the city to the county. Again, that's a huge, huge change that, without that happening, we wouldn't be as far as we are. So, and really honestly, very creative partners, willing to think through acquisition if that's what's needed and so on. So just really very grateful to the City Housing Authority and their partnership on this as well. So we've created a lot of units there. People are getting housed. Somebody mentioned a birth certificate along the way, somewhere. Yeah, you know, so there's, there's a lot of steps that are needed to get housing. You have to have your documents. You have to, so just incredible amount of work that our teams are doing to just store those documents better so that if people lose them in the future, there's just so much that people need in order. So I think we're making some system changes that will serve people better in the future as well, and, and having those, and having those key documents. So that's just a little bit about 500 and 500. So we're going to make it. Units are still critically important. I would take, I would, yeah, we'll look at, we'll look at anything. We'll, we'll look at units for sure. But it's also, I think, taught us a lot about, okay, who amongst this partnership can acquire? Who amongst this partnership can manage properties? Who amongst this partnership broadly defined can provide services to people after, after they're housed? Who are the private developers who really come with ideas for 500 and 500 and so on? So I think it's, I think it's been a really important learning opportunity. We've also seen increases in people getting housed through the kind of rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing programs as well. These are for the folks who are more chronically homeless. So again, I, I looked up the data because I want to make sure I was right. Over 1,700 people amongst all these programs got housed last year. So, yeah, I just, I don't have much more to say. Happy to answer questions, but I, the focus on housing has, I think, been really important. I think it, it feels different for people in shelter and on the street.
Councilwoman Chaspr?
Thank you. Well, I haven't had any questions on any of the other specific sections, but, so I haven't really gotten the chance to just reiterate what my colleagues have said already, like fantastic work and just a testament to how much more we can accomplish when we're, when you all are then in just direct conversation all the time, whether it's a single person or whether it's on a cleanup or whether, you know, it's, the partnership is tremendous and really has borne out in the numbers that we've seen today and everything that we're saying. And I, I too appreciate the human centered and the person centered approach. And so a couple of questions. I guess one is specific to housing. One is maybe sort of in between the last section and this section. On the housing, I know that when Councilman Coghill was really chairing this, this council task force, and we were digging in a lot more, we're looking at other cities' models. There was, some of the cities that we were looking at had, you know, the plan that we're sort of accomplishing right now, right? Emergency shelter, then turning over quickly so that people can continue to, you know, move in as necessary, and then to transitional or sort of the next phase of housing with wraparound services, which I understand this is, this is where we are right now with the 500 by 500. And, but I guess what I don't have a handle on is, you know, like, the Houston model was, okay, you get these, this housing, and it's paid for, and there are wraparound services, and everything you need is there, but you only have two years to then move on to another sort of phase of housing from there or some other alternative. That's the very basic understanding that I had in, in a huge metropolis like Houston. Is, do we have that set? I mean, I know we're at the early phases of this, but do we have that sort of like, those guardrails around this yet? Like a, a time limit and, you know, each housing location has its own wraparound services? Or are we still sort of building that and figuring it out?
Yeah, it's a great, great question. So folks who are moving with 500 and 500 are going with a voucher. So it's permanent housing. They don't have to leave. They can take that voucher elsewhere.
So all of them are, okay, got it.
So for 500, 500, yeah. I don't know of anyone who, except for to Bridge Housing, which ultimately will be to permanent housing. I don't know of any case where we're, where there's not a voucher and it's not permanent. And we are providing wraparound services to the, to those folks. Programs, and Andy can help me here too, programs like permanent supportive housing that HUD funds, those, while, while it's called permanent supportive housing, and it can be, I think there, you know, there is, there are efforts to help those folks move into, like, why can't we get a voucher for those folks? In two years? How do we, how do we not, you know, why can't we get a voucher for, for those folks so that they can be in truly permanent housing? So I would say that at least some of our housing feels like it's got a two-year limit on it. Is that?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, the, the rapid rehousing, you might have heard of that, that, that happens in Houston. That happens here too. It's a HUD funded program. And that does have a limit on it, but it's, there's a lot of case management happening to help folks be able to transition from there into a voucher or to be able to be able to sort of sustain that housing on their own. So, yep.
And then I guess going back to the, kind of some of the issues that we covered in the prior section, but all related clearly. So when it comes to areas of town, and maybe this is a question for Camila, but like, when it comes to areas of town that might not have sort of many, many tents set up, it's one person, it's another person, and, and, and we know that Roots isn't everywhere. Is it still the case that we can, you know? What, what is that looking like now? What is that? What, what are you assuming or hoping that that will look like in the future? Like, is there an expand, is, is the hope that there, there would be an expansion of Roots? Or are we just sort of saying, it is what it is right now, and we're, and we're working through it, and it's working?
Yeah. So the expansion is happening. We're currently in second round interviews for the downtown, for, sorry, for the South Side team. So we will be expanding to the South Side through, we're doing interviews for Team Lead and the two folks in the street teams. Having four teams of Roots, having four Roots team will allow us to then cover those areas, like.
Proactively.
Proactively, like I know both your area, Councilmember Warwick and Hill Smith, we also will be able to cover those areas because, like you said, there's not that high of a demand. But then because we have the right teams in place, we can expand. And I know that Ben Talleck has been, has taken on every single request that is not in our area and has connected them to our county partners. So our county partners are in most of the city, and he will personally give that follow-up to ensure that these folks are, are housed. A lot of the, the referrals we've gotten from the areas where we're not at are folks who have been outside for a long time. The community knows them. And they are a little bit distrustful of the system. And so we take a different approach with them, which takes a longer, a little bit of a longer time than normally, like the North Side Housing, 75 people in three months, right? So I think that because Roots is expanding, but also our other teams are expanding, they can provide those services. So I know we're working with folks that are unstably housed through like our PINS program in your area. So we have a lot to provide. So I would just keep asking to send us those requests because we, we, although we're not citywide, we do prioritize folks that are in emergent need. And whatever we can't cover, we share with our county partners and different case management. We also have different case management with internal departments. So PLI, the Park Rangers, some instances with DPW. So I think it is working, but we are expanding.
Yeah, and it is certainly, I mean, in the district I represent, you and Ben have been incredibly responsive, and it, and it's worked. So, yeah, I didn't want to insinuate that it has to spread to every, you know, it has to expand to every zone to be effective. But, yeah, okay. Lastly, this is a little bit of off the wall idea, but I think is happening. I just was, this is going to be about making it more of a, of a program. This idea of really, you know, partnering, whether it's with council offices or others, to, to, to have these conversations with our faith leaders in our communities, right? Because in some cases, there are, there are going to be congregations that are saying, this is our moral imperative, and we want to do more. And I know I've had some of those conversations here and there. But also as we start to have these, you know, more of these conversations about like the acquisition of this building over here that is going to be transitional housing, how important our, our faith and sort of our thought leaders can be in reminding neighbors what it means to be a neighbor, or, you know, utilizing the moral imperative of their congregation or, or, or even their own buildings, right? These large, large buildings that they don't know really what to do with. And are, and are going through these, their own kind of comprehensive planning processes to right-size their, their building and to acknowledge that they're more of community centers than just purely faith centers. Is there, is there a bigger effort to do that, or is it just happening kind of here and there as we can? And is there a space for that? Like, is that something that we'd want to maybe pursue?
I do think that that's definitely a space that is important, specifically getting the communities connected to having conversations around affordable housing, transitional housing, and these spaces that can provide a lot of services to their communities and their congregation, because these folks, even though they might not have stable housing, they do go to these places of prayer or religious engagement. We have connected through some, thank you so much, that, that church has been incredibly helpful in not only communicating compassion and, and our work to the community. I think that it's been amazing. I know we have to do that more, it doesn't have to just happen here and there. Like, I know we have to do it in all the areas. I know that my counterpart in public safety, Assistant Director Jones, is doing that. He has invited us to provide training to religious leaders around trauma response, around crisis intervention, de-escalation. So he has done incredible work around that, and, and I will definitely, he's been like a maven of that. So like, I do think that that's important, and I think that we could all work together to, to just get that partnership. I think they're a key part of their community, like Sister Mary in your community. I think they are, they are, they were providing the resources before we were even there with very little supports. So I, I think they should be a part of the continuum of care.
I would, I would certainly agree. And if there, if there's something that City Council or particular City Council members want to do to get folks together, I think we, we would show up for sure. I, I think it is a little bit more ad hoc than comprehensive. And so I welcome opportunities to make it, you know, more systematized and talk about services and talk about the people and before we need them. Because that's when we always come, is when, you know, like, you know, us struggling to get shelter. And, and of course, it was a strategy we pursued to see if a number of different kind of religious institutions might open up their spaces to us. And it was, we didn't really, we, we didn't get there, right? And so how do we, how do we, how do we kind of build that? And, and not just when we need. Something with, you know, six weeks to go or something like that before winter. So, yeah, particularly around how it's changed. I think people don't, people, and I have to check myself every once in a while. You know, only think about the hardest case and not the, the actual modal cases. Very different, I think, than, than perhaps people realize. So I would welcome opportunities to talk with folks, especially, you know, when we, when we don't need them. So, yeah.
Yep, Ben has told me that we have connections with priests and pastors that have paid for cremations for burials, because that also is expensive for unhoused folks and give them a resting place, a dignified resting place, and also helped with paying for hotels, for temporary hotels, help sign leases when you need a cosigner. So I think we are really working with them, but we should bring them into this community of care and partnership.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Kelsmith?
Thank you. I just want to first thank you all for your work. And, you know, I call OCHS pretty often, so thank you very much for your help. How many people do you have working there?
We currently have 50 people now. We just checked. We just hired our peer, we just hired last week a peer recovery specialist. We have 50 people, and we are like hiring, like, we, I have a, a hiring team, and they have been doing, I think they did over 500 screens last year. Like, people want to work in the city. They want to work in the office. And by the end of the year, we are, with grants and with the budget, we're 85 people is the amount.
And you've been really good at writing grants, as I do. And you have the capacity, obviously, now.
Yes, we, we, we have capacity. I will, I will have to say that our operations team, Nick Hudson, has really been key in getting federal grants, like the one we, you all approved recently from state and federal grants. And I think that that does help us in, in the meantime, right, until, to really help out with some of the more progressive programs that don't get a lot of funding. We do have some capacity, we, we do have more capacity. I will say that something, just to being super transparent, we are finding. we are finding the residency to be a very hard barrier to hire folks that are representative of our communities, of black and brown folks.
And then go work for the county.
Yeah.
Problem solved.
Yeah, but yes, yes.
Thank you. I'm so, I want people to live here that work here, so that's just the way I feel. But I do want to know, we had a post-agenda on human trafficking. And as you're helping people through this process, are you working on those issues as well? And, you know, what are you finding?
Yeah, particularly in the encampments. And I think now the outreach community has all agreed upon that a lot of the homeless folks are victims of human trafficking. So, I know that there has been a task force that's been working with the AG's office to really work on a plan of getting people to safety. And that has been really spearheaded by different folks in the county, Co-respond Sergeant Bristow and our Co-responds team, because they're engaging with them. They are police, but they, they, folks are feeling trustful. And I know that we wanted to present to Director Dalton a plan to have safe houses that are low barrier. We've visited a lot of safe houses, but they have certain restrictions around drug use, methadone, and certain psychiatric medicine. So, we were working together to hopefully get more low-barrier safe houses for women, which we find are really the victims of human trafficking in our unhoused community.
Okay, and so then, when you talk about that, do you work with the DA's office at all on those?
Yes, so, the, yes, yes, yes.
Because one of the things I think we hear oftentimes, and you know it happens a lot in my district, is as soon as you say you're going to do something, people get so angry and they don't want it, and they don't, and I think a lot of it is because of the way we manage properties. And I think that they're having some issues in other parts of the city, similar, you know, properties that they just want to know how you're going to manage them. People claim certain things are happening that aren't necessarily happening. But it's obviously something that we need. And I know for our area, we had made some suggestions on how we could, you know, place people and things that we could do, and those things didn't happen. But we continue to look at other properties. And one of the things, places that people are looking at is Marion Manor in, in our district. And it became a big issue, and Banksville doesn't, you know, they don't want to hear anything about it. But I think it's because they, they're worried about the way things are going to be managed. And what I, my concern is more is that where are the seniors going that were placed in Marion Manors and places? There's a lot of senior high rises that are closing and assisted living places that are closing across the entire state. I'm worried that they're going to be the next vulnerable victims without housing, or the seniors, and there's a rising number of seniors, obviously, we're all getting older. So, I worry about, is there a plan in place for how we're addressing the closing of these facilities? Instead of closing them and not keeping seniors in them, you know, why aren't we doing more to do, to keep the seniors in those places?
That off. I think the issue of nursing homes closing and personal care homes is a, is a really big issue. And it's a bigger issue in Pennsylvania, I think, than other places. And these are, you know, this is actually, this isn't what we do. You know, I don't, we're not closing them. These are often private facilities, but they, the Medicaid rates aren't working for them anymore. And so, I think it is a really significant issue for us to grapple with, and I don't have an easy answer to that. One thing I will say is that the, because in part, people, neighbors are more likely to support, you know, an over, a sixty-two and over facility being in their community facility, you know, housing. We have more of that than, it's a weird thing to say we're oversupplied there. We have more of that than we have of other housing. And so, we're not having a hard time getting those seniors into housing, but I still completely agree with your underlying point that what, what are we going to do if there's not, if there's not care? How, and if the solution is, how do we build a future where people can stay in their homes longer, have kind of in-home care? I mean, that's certainly something we want to be part of. And, you know, Shannon Tharp-Gilliam, I think, was here for a post-agenda yesterday. She's, I think, very thoughtful about ideas about how that can happen. Because if people don't have to be in those spaces for as long a period, that's going to, that's going to be better for all of us. So, yeah, I think, I think, I think all of those things are, you know, especially as this region becomes even sort of older.
I think if we would think of the city, and I talk about this all the time because the school district does it, north, southeast, southwest, and central. And if we have facilities in all those, you know, more, you know, divided amongst the city, and so not every part of the city is taking on big responsibilities, but yet they're managing the needs for those neighborhoods, for every neighborhood. And so, I think it would be, it would be, you know, worth looking into. But I am concerned about the Marion Manor site because it's in such a residential area. And it borders Green Tree, borders Mount Lebanon, Scott Township. It's, it's a really challenging situation there. But I think there's somebody now who wants to build a sixty-two and over facility there. I just don't know if that's even, you know, the residents aren't, they're not, they don't want that either. Some of them, they just, they, actually, I heard they have a petition that they don't want that. But, so we're trying to work through those concerns. So, for me, I, I don't know how you're doing all this stuff because I hear, I hear both. They, you know, get homeless off the street and yet not in this neighborhood and not in that neighborhood. But I do know that there are some neighborhoods that have offered, you know, suggestions and have offered places and ideas. And Councilwoman Gross offered the tiny homes and some of those things. I do know people are trying to think of solutions. And I think if you give Pittsburghers a real conversation and a chance to really, you know, have it, have their concerns heard, knowing how you're going to manage a property and, you know, what their concerns should be for the neighborhood or not be for the neighborhood, I think then they're willing to have, you know, whatever facilities are needed for the, for the people of Pittsburgh and, and for the people most in need. I just think they want to be part of the conversation, not having you just come in and say, "This is the way it's going to be, whether you like it or not," kind of thing. It's their neighborhoods too, and they want to make sure we remember that, I think. And I do want to credit Diane Hobson too for also working with the churches and, and doing some of the things across the city, working with David Jones as well. I think, I think she's working with him too. So, I want to make sure, because she works on our side of the hall, so I want to make sure she gets, you know, her recognition too. And, and I like to, I like that you're giving people the help, you know, not just giving, you know, a need or something. I have a lot of, you know, mental health and homeless people and people with addictions in my own family. So, I do understand, and I do, I do know that there's a need. But I also want to make sure they're getting the help that they need, not just, you know, being thrown into a facility and, and the facility then becomes a problem because there's issues happening there because we didn't manage it the way that we should have managed it, and they're not safe in those communities. Because we actually had, I remember, Director, the woman on the portico who felt like she was assaulted, I think, in a facility, and she didn't want to go to a facility. But I think getting her to a place where she was comfortable and knew that she would be safe was important. So, you obviously want them to feel safe too. So, thank you for your work. I know it's, I know it's a difficult job, and I'm grateful for the, for the work you all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman G- I forget who came first between the two of you. Whoever wants to go with questions?
I just have one quick sort of, in reference, though, because, I mean, I had a situation in, in Greenfield where, I mean, and maybe it's a messaging issue as well as a, so, you know, where we had, it was, it was a very unfortunate situation where, you know, there was a particular house, and one of the neighbors, you know, was unhappy with the folks living in the house for, you know, valid concerns, right? Like, you know, debris in the yard and, you know, needles at some point, you know. So, you know, valid concerns. But they posted it on Facebook, and, you know what I mean? And then the whole neighborhood was in a frenzy that this, you know, then saying awful things just in, I mean, just, it was really ugly, I will say. And, so when we had, and I, I didn't really know what, because, oh, and then it was like, "The city put these people here," I mean, that was the whole gist, right? "The city put these," and I sort of tried to address it and say, "Well, we, you know," and there was no information, and anyway, so, and I don't know even now if this was a five hundred for five hundred placement or not. I mean, that was the sort of implication. But, you know, when we do have situations like that, where you have community members making assumptions about their neighbors and then, you know, complaining to us or, or, you know, to whomever, 3-1-1, what is the mechanism there? Whether it's a, whether it's a, someone who's been placed there by the county or not? I mean, that's obviously a privacy issue. We're not, that, that, you know, I don't think that is information that should be available, you know? I mean, we're talking about just like, you know, a, a single-family home. But what can we do? How can we work with you to make sure that the issue is addressed with the, with the residents, but in a way that also protects their privacy and keeps them safe in there, you know? But also addresses the concern in the community?
Yeah, no, and I, I think a partnership is key here too. The city, you know, OCHS staff is closer to you, so if, if that's what feels comfortable. But I think then, you know, there's a, there's a pretty good chance that someone, we may have not placed them there, but they may be receiving services from us, and maybe they could use a WellCheck, right? And maybe we could offer some additional supports to those folks. So, because we serve so, such a high percentage of, particularly of folks who are in that situation, if, if it's, you know, if they're not receiving our services and they'd be interested in some help, I think we can, we can offer that. So, I mean, I would say you can come to us, and, and the, you can always come, you know, you can always come to me directly, that's, that's not a problem. Our Director's Action Line is awesome, and they're used for concerns about cases and concerns about our work, but they're also used for, it's also used for something like this. It's got six staff, they, they figure out what's going on. It might be that it is a provider of ours, and we can check in with them. But I'm also obviously very willing to work with Camila and the, and the team. And, and so, whichever place you go, I think it is really fine to, to ask us if we can't provide some additional support to people. We're not, you know, you're not going to put it back on Facebook that the county placed them there, and they're in all these, you know, whatever, but I think we can, we can help.
And, and are there any kinds of supports around? Because I know sometimes when folks, you know, get, they're not necessarily used to kind of maintaining the surroundings of the house in a way that's maybe, you know, at the comfort level of, of their neighbors. Are there any supports around that, where it's like, or help? I mean, for example, you know, of the yard, you know, like, well, we like clean up the yard, or whatever it is, right, whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah, we work a lot of cases through our PLI partners because they're the first ones to get called. I know we worked on a case in your district, and we have case conferencing with them, I think it's bi-weekly. And the team that has been really successful is our people in need of support because it's, a lot of the time, it's our older adult population. And they have had a really great working relationship with APS that it's almost immediate that they are there on the scene. It also helps our two PINS team came from APS, had worked there for fifteen years. So, I think that having those folks come to us and that we, because a lot of the time it has something to do with mental health, and our, that team is working very closely also with our post-team with the substance issues. Believe it or not, I know I've talked with Councilperson Gross about like the growing substance use among our older adult population and how we, you know, get a lot of requests from senior high rises for Narcan. And so, I think that we started doing like, like co-days together with EMS. I think EMS has been an incredible partner, the, particularly, we have the public health paramedics. So, we go out with them weekly in order to check on those folks. So, they get supports from EMS, like medical supports, mental health from us and service coordination, and then depending on what their other needs from the, the rest of the, of the, the office. Our goal is always to refer them back to the county programs because the county has so many great programs for them. And so, we're that connector, advocator for them. So, I do think that we do have those supports. If we're not getting them through PLI, you can always send them our way. But those usually, because the neighbors complain, call, and they get assigned an inspector, and then inspectors go through it. So, it's a multi-departamental like task force almost, that it's been very successful. But it, but it is important. And we just went to a house where a senior was living that the house didn't have a back. It was completely open, and, and no one really, you know, was advocating for them. So, I think that this is a really important space that might not be visible, but that's why it's important to, even if you think maybe, oh, maybe PLI got to them, just send them, because it's always good to get duplic- duplication information than not, nothing at all.
And then, this is a little tangential, but just because I just thought of it in relation to another issue. There was talk at some point of like a hoarding task force. Is that something that is, that is, and I know these cases don't come up a lot, but boy, when they come up, they're something else, yeah.
I don't have a follow-up on that. I would have to check, but I agree that there was a hoarding task force. And it's probably working to some degree amongst the partners, like, those are, those are the key people, you know, PLI and our Aging Services and Elder Adult Protective Services and so on. But I, that has come up, and I can, I can follow up and see where that might be. But I agree, it's a really tricky problem because it's not, a small amount of support is not going to be the answer there, so, yeah. And you can do harm to people as you're trying to help, and so, yeah. I can, I can, I can take that back and see if there's sort of, yeah, enough sort of leadership to get behind that to, to make it fruitful.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to pick up on that because it's, for anyone listening to this post-agenda, just how difficult it is. We have multiple levels of government here. We have county government and city government. We've created our own Office of Community Health and Safety that, I mean, I think it was only three years ago, there was maybe five employees. And you're at about fifty, and you're aiming for like eighty-six. And then, just to pick up on that last topic, how many different times that we've tried to create programs that, for example, like the whole home repair that we knew, you know, so many of our seniors were going to need to have habitable housing in their own homes? We've talked about it in terms of the land bank maybe providing support for people who were struggling to stay in their homes or maintain their homes. We know that, as you've mentioned before in this presentation, that the most significant increase of people in the, in the unhoused system here are seniors, and now seniors with drug addictions, but also, you know, some of us go out and knock on doors for ourselves or for other candidates, and it's a, you know, it's a thing that is part of our democracy. And once you get really up to someone's front door, very often, you can really are surprised. And it doesn't matter what kind of house it is. Might be a humble house, or it might be a really big fancy house. And you can see the same signs of, of hoarding or lack of maintenance or kind of, you're concerned that there are unhealthy conditions. And then other, again, we've kind of approached it in various times that I've been at this table for ten years in different ways too. It very often intersected with like animal hoarding stuff that we know we've seen also in so many manifestations. So, these are very complex situations. And so, I appreciate, once again, that you're kind of bringing that collaboration across multiple different budget lines and program restrictions and those kinds of things. It can be really difficult, so. Back to, back to the actual physical housing, right? So, again, not, you know, most of this presentation, we talked about people in tents. We talked about the capacity, added capacity and shelter system. And then there's also housing, which is not shelter. So, just, just so, just to keep our vocabulary straight. I've often said in the last three or four years that we've been working on this, it's really, there's a, it's, it's difficult for, especially those of us who serve in different capacities or different roles, to keep our vocabulary straight. And then it's very confusing to understand kind of what is the problem that's being applied and that kind of stuff. So, here, we're talking about housing as both the, the bridge housing, we're not calling it shelter. So here we're talking about housing as both the, the bridge housing, we're not calling it shelter in this conversation. It's still, it was bridge housing and it's people who are kind of waiting to move into the permanent housing. Um, and so the program that was, is on the border of my district and Councilman Mosley's district is bridge housing. And people have moved into permanent housing. I think the last update I got, it was less than ten, maybe. I'm not sure if it's past that now, but still. Here in your slide presentation, you have two hundred and three housing units created and three hundred sixty-nine people moved into housing. Do you want to explain what those different bullet points mean?
Sure. Um, I'll, I'll start with the easiest part of that question, which is, might be as simple as what you'd like. I mean, we, we're housing families as well. And so that's why there are more people than units. We don't, I'm glad actually, I'm, I'm happy to talk about family homelessness. Talk about confusing. And when you try to confuse, not confuse, but have those conversations at the same time, the, the challenges are really different for those populations too. And so I'm, I'm kind of glad that we've kept it separate here today. But we are, uh, housing families, um, and family homelessness is also a very serious issue. It's less visible and we have, we make sure, um, and this is a place, um, in part because of our Child Protective Services resources and so on, that we can provide shelter, um, to anyone who's, who's staying outside. That's not, it's never going to be an issue. People, you know, people can, um, try to not take advantage of that for sure, but, um, and family shelters are also feel a little, feel a little bit different than, um, than the shelters we've been talking about. But if anyone knows of a child staying outside, like we, we have, we have resources for them today.
I just want to make sure that I say that and just repeat it. If you know, and you're hearing this of any child who's outside, there is a space, they will be provided immediately. So you all have prioritized families and children.
We have, yeah. It's hard. It goes, I mean, pregnant, pregnant, um, people as well. I mean, those, those children, um, you know, we're, we're trying to protect all of those, um, those folks. And, and, and these are obviously super hard choices. It's not like, you know, we care about all of the folks, but we have funding and we have responsibility. You know, we, we can't knowingly, um, have children outside, given our Child Protective Services responsibility. So, right. Does that answer your question or would you like to go deeper than that?
Well, um, just to kind of follow up then, how, maybe I missed it. How many people, because what, in my mind here, we've been talking for three years about the kind of like, we want to make sure there's capacity at each one of the like steps or stepping stones. And that because there was no housing and really no bridge housing, then, then the shelters were full and then people were outside, right? And so there's a, a backup. Um, and so you're adding capacity in several places in this kind of pathway to permanent housing. And so how many people have like moved through? I, I, like I'm creating this flow, like I keep doing it with my hands and that's what my brain is doing.
It is really, these are really tricky flows, actually. I'll just say a couple of things that you, you probably already know, but, and Andy can correct me if, um, he feels like I have it off by some magnitude. I mean, still, the vast majority of people who come to shelter stay for a day or two and then they, and they resolve without our assistance. Fewer people are doing that, um, in the previous, you know, in the past couple of years because I think of difficulty around affordable housing and so on. But still so many people just kind of resolve that way. So there's, there's sort of that part of that flow. I mentioned earlier that we, amongst all of these programs, we housed over seventeen hundred people last year. And we also saw twenty percent, uh, might be a little more than that, reduction in length of stay in our family shelter. So people, those families are getting out into permanent housing faster. That's really important. So, um, this gives you some sense of flow. Shelter length of stay isn't dropping yet. That was one of the measures that, that's a measure that is important to me. Like for people who are long stayers, particularly in shelter. And I think that's just in part, I, I, um, I was praising and I showed that the city's housing authority for their help in, in making that process faster. The process to get housed still is taking about forty-five days. It's, there's all kinds of things that have to happen and that, that's pretty fast, but it's, it's still a long time to stay in shelter. And so, um, you know, that's certainly a piece. The flow part is, is critical. We're seeing it in places increase and, and we're seeing it not, uh, you know, not, not go the other way, but, but may, uh, be stable at a place that we would like to see it go down. So that's not a full answer to your question about flow, but we are, I think if we looked at the percentages, but I could be wrong. So Andy, we probably actually haven't done this analysis and it might be interesting to do. I think we're creating more, like the biggest percentage of things that we're creating, I think are units, are, is housing.
Right. So we're on the five hundred and five hundred part of the presentations, right? And so that's what I'm trying to kind of understand.
And, and I don't know that we actually have done this. I think we are, um, so there's a percent increase, percent increase in shelter beds and we can calculate that. And the percent increase in either people housed or, they're not necessarily units created, but people moving into units or whatever, but the units associated with that. I think this is, I think this is the, the largest percentage change, um, but we can look at that. And I, I, um, I don't think we've actually done that piece. Yeah. So we can do that.
That'd be great. I, um, but it's, you know, you set the goal of five hundred for a reason, right? I remember when we were kind of, you know, before the public launch, when you were kind of saying, like, I really think I'm going to really set a goal. And that's because people couldn't get to, into the permanent housing.
Yep.
Um, and so now they are. Um, and so that's not quite halfway there with two hundred units.
Yeah. And we, as I said, we were walking through it today. Actually, it is, it is, it is more than that. We're going to make it.
Okay. So you're going to update this?
Yeah.
But, um, and the call to action for all of us, right, is like, hey, you know, just you happen to have like an unused building that we, you know, haven't found yet, um, or a site or someplace to convert. And so I think we, it's, as Councilwoman Kelsmith said, it's, it's not an easy conversation to change things ever. And so, um, but the more we have capacity, the, the, the easier this whole system gets, right? We need the physical capacity and where people can be safe.
Yeah. No, that's right. And, um, I appreciate you sending, um, potential buildings to, to us. I think there's like, there are some other things that are, are, you know, places where you can all help and, you know, advocate. I mean, we need more people, we, we need more property owners willing to take vouchers.
Yes.
That, like, there are too many unused vouchers in our community. If more people took vouchers and then if the people that took vouchers, if that whole big group of people that took vouchers, were willing to give ten percent of their units to people exiting shelter, that would make a huge, you know, that's it. Those are, so it can be in new acquisitions and we love that. But it can also be in people doing things newly, right? So if, you know, you're a big property owner and you don't accept vouchers right now, maybe you, maybe you start doing that in X percent of the cases or X percent of the units. And maybe of those, a percentage goes to, um, this population that again, has services attached. It's not just, we're dropping people off. So I think those are, you know, that's a thing, um, that, that can help. And, and even just, you know, smaller property owners who, we're going to make a, a pitch to some of the smaller property owners who just, I'll just say also in the past, um, DHS didn't have the infrastructure to match units quickly. So we didn't have a portal where we, you could say, hey, I know you have twenty units throughout the county or throughout the city or whatever. If you're interested in getting matched within two weeks and, um, and getting regular rent payments, because they're coming with a voucher, five hundred and five hundred might be something you would want to participate in. So we have a way that people can do it. They don't have to like, you know, we will talk to them. We do want to understand what their, their rules are so that we're matching the right people to those units. Um, and we'll handhold through that. But there's also a portal, so I can just put, put in my units and, and expect to hear back on, on matches. So, um,
So you have had some landlords.
Yes. Private developers, yes.
Come forward and say, you know what? I'm going to start taking vouchers.
Yep. Um, well, better than that, um, not just that. I'm going to start taking vouchers and I'm going to put units in for five hundred and five hundred for people exiting homelessness. So, but I think we can all be advocates in saying how important it is to take those vouchers and have some percentage of the units that you, um, that you have, especially if they're getting public funding, right? Along the way somehow.
So property management companies even, right? Because sometimes it's a property management company that's actually managing like a portfolio for many smaller, property owners who maybe are just like in Florida and don't really, aren't managing their own properties. So that, that could provide the capacity.
Yep.
That we need so that we don't have people in shelters for forty-five days who literally just have never been homeless for a day in their life, but now they're in a shelter.
Yep.
Or the people who are literally just unhoused because, you know, in my district, it's, I've had to really, luckily I got the calls, right, from people who were, to, to your point, two, two separate cases that were so parallel, two different neighborhoods, both, you know, literal grandmas who had been living in their units for a long time. I mean, I want to say like both of them like twenty years, right? But be, in a, in a gentrifying neighborhood, you know, your landlord suddenly decides that, you know, they, that there's, they could sell for a lot of money. So we call them renovictions, right? So they're getting evicted because somebody's flipping their property, right? And so even though for decades it was just like, you know, and these were both of them, again, different neighborhoods, different people, like your hundred-year-old townhouse, you know, row house. And it was like, my God. And then, you know, I'm, I've got to find a place. I've been looking for a place, but, you know, and I've gone to the magistrate and I've gotten an extension, but I, I'm going to be on this street, you know? Um, so luckily they're both, they're both stable, but, um, that's not, again, that, that is a different kind of homelessness than most of our city residents, um, understand, right? That it's, could be your grandma. And I've told this story before and you've probably heard me tell it, but I also have had a constituent tell me, you know, please do not use my name. Please do not give any identifying information because you might entire large family network is, you know, are homeowners in your district. And, you know, I've lived my whole life and, but, you know, once those bad things happen and they don't know, you know, so I'm, I'm in a shelter and they don't know. And so, um, you, it might be your cousin. You know, so we, I think we understand the importance of, of doing this. So we appreciate the county's help because this is, this was beyond our capacity to do. We, we couldn't have done this. You have different budget lines than we have, different funding sources. And let's just keep our fingers crossed that we continue to have this from the federal government as well. So, um, I think, I think that's all my questions, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, so a lot was talked about today. I, I really appreciate you coming back again. I do think this will be a somewhat regular occurrence. Um, you know, I would like to have you back again end of summer when we're ready to start talking about winter again, which feels like a lifetime away from now, right now. But a, a couple of things I did want to follow up on. We mentioned, you know, obviously HUD is a, a huge partner in everything that we're doing. Everything in the federal government is topsy-turvy right now. Do you have any sense of guidance of how this is going to affect your, your work? I, I think, I mean, I think everyone wants guidance of what the federal government's going to look like in, you know, tomorrow, next week. But do you, do you have any sort of clarity of what that could mean?
I mean, I don't.
Yeah.
We are worried about the housing side. We're worried, obvious, we're worried about Medicaid for, um, I think that's been pretty, pretty well publicized, that, um, likely cuts to Medicaid in a, in a, in a situation where we're already underfunded in, in Medicaid, at least for the past two years. Um, and, and those cuts seem relatively likely. And then when the state has to try to fill in those gaps, um, it might be less funding for other things like child protection and prevention and homelessness. When it comes to HUD, um, I think there's probably, there's, there's a couple of things. The, it seems like the continuum, continuum of cares, continuums of care are getting their funding. Ours don't, doesn't come typically till July, so we haven't had the opportunity for that to happen. And the, I think what we're hearing from Senator, Senator Fetterman's office is that, that stuff should be coming through. So that, we're not expecting any changes there. I mean, we hear, as everyone does, the big cuts to the workforce. I think we don't know the impact of that, but it cannot be good, um, to cut, you know, fifty to eighty-five percent of HUD. I don't know how things get processed. We don't, you know, I don't, so, uh, and HUD takes a pretty hands-on approach. And so, um, uh, we'll have to see if that comes to be how that, how that happens. There have been cuts in HUD, particularly the, the people who did housing discrimination work. Like that's, stuff's been cut by two-thirds or something like that. That doesn't affect us directly, but it's also not good, right? Like, I mean, well, from my perspective, protecting people from housing discrimin- discrimination is important. So, you know, what I generally tell people is we're going to operate on concrete information and we're going to keep going until we have it. As you know, things change really rapidly. Uh, things that we thought might happen get pulled back and so on. So, but I, I would say HUD and Medicaid are probably two of the pieces we're most concerned about.
Yeah. Um, well, you know, is, it goes without saying, but how, if there's ever anything that we can do to help with that, I, we, we don't know what it is. We don't know what changes are going to affect all of us. You know, this morning I was informed that a, uh, our public worksite might be in jeopardy because of tariffs. And it's like, you know, one, one more thing. But, but, you know, it, it's just, you know, I think we're all learning how this is all going. But if, if there is any way that we can be supportive, um, you know, please, please let us know and as we figure out what we're doing too. The, you know, you brought up a, a point that has come up so many times here is the payment discrimination of housing choice vouchers. And if we had the capacity as a city or a county to, to outlaw that, that that would be such a game changer in our affordable housing needs. And unfortunately, state law says that we can't do that. Is there, has there been any movement to, to, from your perspective to try to talk to folks in Harrisburg about what we can do to, to change that?
Yeah, not really my, um, my strong side. So I'm sure there are folks who, who could answer that question for you. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not the one. Um, do you have any insight? No, sorry. There are great affordable housing folks who, who could probably talk about strategy there, um, both within the city and the county. I, I don't have any insight though.
I know there's a new task force that just launched, uh, that's co-headed by Rep Powell, that's going to be looking at affordable housing. So I think that can be a great place to start.
Yeah. I mean, uh, you know, I, I think that would be one of the things that we could do that would, would revolutionize, you know, our housing issues if, if we were able to require that.
Shout out to Councilman Lavelle who,
What's that?
Shout out to Councilman Lavelle who introduced it, um, to banning source of income discrimination that, you know, this council voted on.
Yeah.
That got challenged in court and thrown out, but yeah.
Yeah. I, I believe it's the, I believe it was the supreme, the state supreme court that ultimately threw it out. But, um, you know, still I think it's something that's really, really important. You know, I guess I'm going to continue seeing how the summer goes. My office, you know, has, has been fielding lots of calls and luckily, you know, a lot of those have, have kind of died down, as the weather changed, but we're still, we've got issues outside of Unity Recovery in, in Southside. The Southside Trail remains a problem. Um, as we're starting to pour a lot of money into investing in the economy on East Carson Street, we're finding homelessness being, you know, a barrier to, to actually making that change there. So we will certainly be in contact, um, as this progresses. I want to make sure you meet, uh, Susan Anderson, who is the business district manager for East Carson, who has, um, now she's personally driven people to the hospital from East Carson Street. And this is, although we hired her to attract new businesses and retain businesses, this has kind of become her, uh, additional job. And so we will continue to stay in contact there. But I, I do appreciate you, you know, being able to come here and spend an afternoon with us. with us, so. Uh, does anyone have any closing comments? All right. It's, it's been, been a long time, but it's really important and, you know, very, very little that we do in the city really matters if we don't address this well, so.
No, thank, thank you for having us. I appreciate the, the time from everyone here as well.
Thank you. All right. So having exhausted the business of this post agenda, this meeting is adjourned.